Ladies and gentlemen, let me call this meeting to order. It's our regular July the 13th. Monday night special. It's not a special call meeting, but I think I just want to say it's very special. I'm thrilled to death to see you people here tonight. I wish we could have some turnout like this. But we don't have such an issue, Mr. Patrick.
That's right.
You're all always welcome here, and I always started out. You're welcome to come and be here. And what I'm looking around tonight, I came too early. I've got so many of you sitting here tonight. I call you now. And we're looking for government tonight. And we're going to be looking as representing all of our people. We talk about city, county, or whatever. And there's going to be different ones to speak. And that'll be fine. I'll probably limit you for just a few minutes, but that's okay. But I want to go with a roll call. Mr. McGuire, are you with me?
I am with you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. This is something new. We're trying, but anyways, we're talking, and that's the way we're running. He's on his, not vacation. You can't call it that.
We're under two weeks in Ukraine.
All right, welcome back tonight. Okay. Let it be known that the roll call is, everyone's here. Do you have an agenda? I'd like a motion to approve the agenda, please.
I made a motion to approve the agenda. I'll second.
Then you've got a second here. All in favor? Unanimous, Mr. McGuire? You got you. I'm glad you're here. Yeah, all right. Okay. Now, I know we're crowded. And I'm going right on to B part on our agenda about approving second reading of ordinance prohibiting liquor sales. First of all, Kelly, I'm going back to you. Kind of a little thing, what you said before. Just upgrade to what you have picked up, okay? Stand up, young man.
Mayor, at our last meeting, there was introduced an ordinance that had been brought up and considered last year concerning the location of any alcoholic beverage selling location in the event the city of Scottsville should be voted wet. That was, shall we say, continued without any action last year. In front of our last meeting in June, there was this first reading ordinance to the effect that in the event the ordinance changed the legal status of Scottsville from local option dry territory to legal sales of alcoholic beverages within the city limits of Scottsville, then there would not be allowed, licensed or permitted, any facility or location for the sale or dispensing alcoholic beverages within 1,000 feet of a church, school, or government building measured along the edge or boundary of the street right away from front entrance to front entrance of the building. Now, as I say, that passed on first reading at our June meeting. And the event that it passes tonight or passes at a subsequent date, it would become an ordinance upon publication. Of course, you have to sign it, Mayor, as Mayor.
Right.
As I mentioned at our last meeting, I did some research last Monday before the city council meeting in June. And it appears as though the matter of city and county ordinances regulating the sale of alcoholic beverages have been brought up before. There was a case 30 years ago before the Kentucky Supreme Court. In that case, the Kentucky Supreme Court ruled that with respect to the regulation of alcoholic beverages, the authority and power of the state ABC Board is supreme. In that case, the Supreme Court essentially ignored an ordinance by the city of Newport limiting the number of beer licenses, which would be something akin, in my opinion, to this ordinance that we have here. One thing about it, if you call the state ABC Board, they won't talk to you. So it's very difficult to ascertain what position they would take on ordinance like this. It is my judgment. I don't think they would award it much deference or comity, but that's up to them. They do have the authority to do essentially whatever they want to do, in my opinion. As I say, their authority is supreme according to the Supreme Court.
Okay.
So if we do pass this ordinance, in my opinion, the state ABC Board can do the same thing as they did in Newport, I think, or.
Thank you, Kelly. You brought that up before. All right, now, what I'm going to do, I can't, we've got so many people here tonight. I can't let everyone just raising their hands start talking to me, recognize? Russell, you've always been that spokesman for these people.
Yes, sir.
I will point you. If any of these people want to comment on this, they come through you. And then you put it out of roll. Is that fair enough?
Works for me.
It'll work for you. All right. I'm thrilled to death. We've got a young lady just came to me meant to go.
Rebecca McKinnon.
Rebecca McKinnon. You will be the spokesperson for the other people, okay?
Yes.
And if they want to speak, they come through you. And then you let us know what's going on, okay? I will let, being you the lady of the crowd tonight, I'm going to let you go first, okay?
All right.
Okay. Speak to us.
Thank you.
Tell us what your opinion is and what you represent.
I am here tonight on behalf of the Citizens for Economic Growth in Allen County. I've spent much time thinking about how I wanted to address you all tonight. And I would like to first say that I think that this ordinance would best be tabled until it becomes an issue to be addressed. At this point in time, yes, there is a petition going around, but there is no vote even. The signatures have not been obtained to have a vote at this point. Further, as there is no vote, there at this time is no vote in favor of the county and the city becoming wet. So at this time, passing an ordinance would do absolutely no good. And I'm afraid that it would have the effect of ending meaningful discourse as to the merits and the potential negative consequences of the county and the city becoming wet. If that were to happen, I believe that you, as members of the city council, would be unable to fully assess what all of your constituents want from this. And also, I would like to say that tabling it at this point in time would not prejudice any party involved, either in favor or in opposition, for the ordinance. This could always be brought up at a later time when it's an issue. And perhaps when it's arguably, you're in a position to better understand the potential negative consequences moving forward. If we were to go it, you could always bring it back up and truly address how will this help? How will this hurt our community? And how can we tailor the ordinance to fit that? And as to my last point, I'm concerned as to the overbreadth of the ordinance. We have a basic idea in front of you that you want it to be so far away from churches and government buildings. However, is there a way to tailor this to where you can protect the exercise of religious faith on one side and protect their interests and address other concerns that the community may have while also creating an environment that's suitable for economic growth? That's so important for the future of this town. Thank you.
How can we argue with you? You're in trouble.
I'm in trouble. My next. Tell what you're called. Mayor of the council. My name is Russell Mills, of course. And not just representing a group of called Concerned citizens of Allen County, Scottsville. I'm representing everyone that is gathered tonight and as well as citizens that are not here at the meeting tonight. But what I'd like to say tonight to the council is that I don't think there's ever a time that anything is too premature, as we've heard the argument in the past. We have been here before. And the question or the comment we made before about being premature, there's a lot of things that we do, as I mentioned before, salt before the snow comes. Ordinance has been passed in the city and county before against adult establishments, adult bookstores being held in our county. So I don't think there's ever a time that's too early to establish a ordinance. And we're not saying, as I'd like to, since we're on radio, we'd like to say this. We're not trying to say we're against anybody voting. We're 100% for anybody's voting rights. We're not against democracy. We're just saying that we think there's areas that we would not like to see alcohol sold in. That being within the areas of schools, churches, government buildings, in that matter. The council took a vote on it last time. I want to say thank you for the stance you took. And I'd like to see you take that stance again tonight and go on and pass this on second reading. There is a petition circulating. You know, it's a good chance that the signatures are going to be collected. It may go on the ballot. And if it doesn't, if they never get to, the signatures never get there, it never gets on the ballot, then we still not done any harm. The law is in place. The law is there. And the ordinance is there. So there's no need to, it's not, we've not done any harm by having that on the books. I'm sure there's several law on the books now that exist that doesn't really affect a lot of day-to-day business or life in Allen County or Scottsville. And so if that never happens to be a problem, then we've got it on the books anyway. It doesn't really affect anything. But that's just my concern tonight. And we'd really like to see the council to take action on it tonight. I'd like to see, would be in favor of you voting to get this ordinance in place. And Mr. Powell, I'd like to ask just direct one question to you, if it's okay. The ordinance that was, that you read off earlier, it was nothing to do with the involvement of how close alcohol could be sold to anything. It was only limiting how many license could be. Is that correct?
No, no. It was, it limited the sales to a location more than 1,000 feet from a church, a school, or a government building.
Maybe I didn't make myself clear. I'm sorry if you still can't rephrase it. It was the one from 30 years ago you quoted, in maybe the town of Newport?
No, the case that I referred to was a Supreme Court case. Has nothing, it's not involving.
Sure, I'm.
It involved Newport, which, as you know, has been selling liquor for a long time. And they had an ordinance in Newport that involved the number of beer licenses that could be permitted within the city limits of Newport.
Okay.
And this gentleman applied for a beer license. And he was told by the city administrators, no, we cannot give you a beer license. You cannot sell beer in Newport because we have an ordinance establishing total number. And that number has been used up. There are no more, no more licenses can be issued. He went to the state ABC Board. They gave him a beer license. He started selling beer the next day or the next day. And here comes the city to try to close him down. It was a big lawsuit. It went to the Supreme Court. The Supreme Court essentially ignored the city of Newport ordinance. And they said the regulation of alcoholic beverages is done by the state ABC Board. And what they do, they do. And nobody can, cities, and essentially what they said was cities and counties cannot pass an ordinance that will supersede their authority.
Right. Okay, I just want to be certain. It wasn't an ordinance saying it couldn't be sold with an X amount of feet of a church?
No.
It was completely different than what we're looking at here.
Well, it was essentially regulating the sale of alcoholic beverages. And it was ignored. And it's akin to the situation we have here because I think that if it got to the Supreme Court again, they would say, well, this is the same thing we had before. This is a local city trying to regulate alcoholic beverages. And we have already said that the state ABC Board has the complete authority. By that, I mean, by authority, I mean, the number and types of licenses and the location of those licenses, whether it's within 1,000 feet of a church, school, or government building or not.
And one more thing, and I'll be done. Is there, do you know of any other cities that have an ordinance in Kentucky of this, that says that alcohol can be sold in certain areas?
Well, Bowling Green had one, but they repealed it. They amended it to delete that provision following a decision of the U.S. Supreme Court in the case of Larkin. In that case, the Supreme Court ruled that this type of an ordinance was the establishment of religion. But in that case, the ordinance provided that the church had to take action and say, we don't want it. In other words, it was up to the church to decide. If we pass this ordinance, it won't be up to the church to decide. The city of Scottsville has decided that there will be no liquor sold within 1,000 feet of a church, school, or government building. There will be no church action for the establishment of religion.
Okay. All right. Well, that's all I was going to clarify on that tonight. I wasn't 100% sure of how that was.
They had one in, but they used to be in Bowling Green. If you couldn't have it within so many feet of a church, but that has been deleted. And it's been quite some time. I think about maybe 20 to 30 years ago it was deleted over there. Now, there may be other cities that have it. I wouldn't know. Not sure.
Okay. So there, but there could be other cities in Kentucky that does have this similar type of ordinance.
There could be. Could very well be.
All right. Once again, thank you for allowing me to speak for you tonight.
Does anyone, while he's up here, want to ask a question through him?
I'm going to get a megaphone and ask it down the hallway. I think there's more out there than there is in here. Yes, Brother Jeremy Carter made a good point that he liked me to. We are for economic growth. We're not at all against economic growth. We're just for the morals of our community. Not at all. I'm 100% for economic growth. Matter of fact, Mayor, I've had several conversations with you in the past of businesses that.
Hey, I had one with you today. I know we're late.
We've helped bring several businesses in this town. And not at all against any economic growth.
And we're going to continue that, Russell.
That's correct. That's correct. I've had.
We may disagree, but we'll still continue.
I've always said that, Mayor. I've had a lot of city involved, but in doing things of that nature, want to continue to see our city grow.
My name's Aaron Mahorn. But you asked part of it, you know. I can't see how beer or alcohol or anything will help the economic growth. Why does it take that to make a town grow?
I can answer that question. Thank you, Mayor. And actually, would it be okay if I let you answer that question, man? I like to give you the floor.
Yes, thank you.
I'll answer it. Let me say his question, so everybody can hear it, if that's okay.
Yes.
His question was, how would the sale of alcohol help economic growth in our community? And so I'm going to ask this lady on the other side to answer that.
Thank you. And I am not as well versed in the how, the intricacies of how it will help economic growth as the state decision is. I would, I will probably consult with her. But we will get substantial tax revenue from the sale of alcohol. And many cities, one example being Somerset, Kentucky, have actually used the tax revenue generated and put it towards youth sports. I know here we have a lot of parents who are of limited means but would love to see their children involved in sports if they're able. But unfortunately, I believe the cost was $100 per child participating this year. But Somerset was able to offer these same programs for only $10. It also creates an environment that's just hospitable for young professionals and other businesses to come in. So you're not going to see just a growth of liquor stores or restaurants that may happen to sell alcohol, but you're going to see a growth in boutiques and stores that might happen to sell maybe fancy cheeses and crackers and meats as well. You're going to see all kinds of growth that will be generated from this. And thank you. Do you have any other statistics that you would like to add?
I'd just like to say, we have a couple of reports that we have obtained from the TBA that say we are already spending the money. The money is just leaving the account. I believe it says that $2.4 million from 42164 zip code, which is only from debit credit card transactions, which are traceable. Cash transactions are obviously not. $2.4 million is being spent in package liquor stores alone in other areas besides obviously. Another million dollars is being, is being bought in other areas by the drink alcohol. Our point is, people are already doing it. We're just losing the tax revenue from it. Okay? We're not. That's all I'm going to say.
I would like to address some of the other points that Mr. Russell Mills respectfully made earlier. We do see the harm in going ahead and passing the ordinance now.
Will you go ahead, ma'am?
Passing the ordinance now as opposed to later. It's much harder traditionally to repeal or change an ordinance once it's on the books. And as it's not an issue right now, you can't fully assess the full extent of what all of your constituents really want in this scenario. It would be best to table it and examine the ordinance and the actual words, what it says, how it will actually affect the county, what it will look like once it's put into effect. And ask yourselves, can we meet the needs and the wants of the whole community? Can we respect the morals, protect the moral values of Allen County and Scottsville? But also create an environment where new businesses will come and set up shop and create an environment that will ultimately attract young professionals, which is the future of our county. Does anybody have a question for me?
Yeah, does anybody want to ask her for a question?
Or to pose to the council?
I do. I do. Okay. You said that alcohol, the sale of alcohol would help the youth. It would help lower it from $100 to $10, such as Somerset. But what you're not telling and what you're not saying is that the more alcohol that flows into this community and the more alcohol that is accessible, then we create more alcoholics. We create more people that have drinking problems.
He needs to ask a question.
I asked the question. Mayor, you know, I came tonight to enjoy this meeting, but.
Respectfully, I.
Let me finish. Let me finish before I was interrupted. Well, the question is, I'll ask a question.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you for being so polite to me all night.
Yes, he's been throwing cameras in people's face, Mayor, respectfully.
I asked the chief if he would just please ask him to stop sticking it in my face. And he didn't.
I have checked on this.
Well, it's okay. But I don't, I don't, I don't think you would like him to walk over and just stick it up your face, would you? Okay. Okay. That's, that's good. Well, that's why I asked him.
Well, I also checked now.
I don't have a problem with that, Mayor.
He came up here.
Can I finish my question?
I want to say something. And you go ahead.
No, it's okay. Sorry.
He videoed that first man, and I didn't know it. But I've done some checking on it. Legally, Kelly, I can't keep him from.
I don't have a problem with that, Mayor.
Yeah, that will make a point. Now, Danny, you go right ahead.
I don't have a problem with that. But I don't like somebody just turn around and stick it in my face and tell me they're going to put me on Facebook tonight. This is going to make something good for Facebook. I don't like Facebook. I don't have it. Let me finish.
Yes.
Did you not say that?
Did you not call me the enemy?
No, I was joking. I was joking there. Oh, goodness. What I'm saying is, is I.
You're concerned about the youth.
I, I, no, no, no. I'm, I'm saying, how do you, how can you say that, that the alcohol will generate so much money, but you're not, you're not saying that there'll be more DUIs? There'll be more things that'll happen? If people want to drink that, I'm not, I'm just here as this committee and part of this committee to just simply say, the ordinance is not going to hurt anything. You're talking about how hard it'll be to repeal it? Evidently, it wasn't that hard for the ABC to repeal it. And if it generates all that, you're saying the good things that you see of it, but you're not telling the other side of the story. There will have to be additional.
Point of order, he's not asking a question. He's giving a speech.
I would like to.
I'll stop right there.
Add that as.
I'll stop.
As a question.
I'll stop.
I understand what you're trying to say. But I, I believe our point of view is that the alcohol is here. Clearly, 3.3, was that the stat? $3.3 million is being spent in.
I'll speak when my, I'll speak when he gets up, okay? Will that please you?
If you ask questions?
I'll speak, Andrew.
All right, Russell, I think you had. Yes, I've got about 14 questions. I was trying to get to them.
I have not, excuse me, I'm sorry. I have not had the chance to address his comment. I would like to have the chance to.
I asked a question, but I couldn't finish it because I've been interrupted three times.
Could you please phrase your.
No, I'll wait till Russell gets up.
Okay, thank you. I would like to address the question, comment.
You've got about three minutes.
Thank you. The alcohol is already, already in the community.
I understand that.
Many people do suffer from problems related to alcohol in this community. I have heard many personal stories. However, I would like to point out that those stories, their personal struggles came about when this town was very much so dry. And I know many of you have concerns about the youth of the community. Well, personally, I would much rather have one of you all running a liquor store and selling alcohol in the community. I know that I can trust you. I know that you will know that my child is underage and should not serve, should not be serving alcohol as opposed to a stranger whom I don't know in another community who has no investment, no, no investment in my child or my community.
What community do you live in?
Scottsville.
You live in Scottsville?
Yes, born and raised my entire life.
Okay.
You live in City of North?
Yes, sir, I do.
I've got another question. The cameras have escaped me tonight. Do I have any representatives from Dayton, New York here tonight? Welcome, young man. Usually Laura comes through.
She's a gentleman.
You know what I'm talking about? And she caught me at the restaurant Friday night. And I said, the only thing I can tell you, yes, it will be a risk. So you're here tonight, and you're hearing it being addressed, okay?
I will pass the floor to Mr. Mills.
Thank you. All right. I would like to say one thing. I've got several questions that have been asked. And I'm going to try my best to remember them. If not, I'm going to have to go back to cut level. But one thing that we addressed tonight was economic issues of alcohol being sold. Another thing was DUIs and statistics and that thing. This ordinance has never said we're, we're not voting on the ordinance tonight about if alcohol can or not be sold. We're not, we're not taking a vote tonight, a ballot, on a yes or no, wet and dry. We're talking about passing an ordinance tonight if it can be sold next to a church, school, or government building. I think we've kind of got off base, off track a little bit of what this ordinance says tonight. I think we've kind of got into the debate tonight of, and I personally would love to say I'm against alcohol in every way, shape, or form. Have I always been? No. I'm one of those that you spoke about earlier that has had issues with alcohol. People want to say, well, Russell, I don't want to tell all about his past. Listen, show up anytime I'm preaching, you can hear a lot about my past. But never, it's a past. But what I want to say tonight, this is not about voting for alcohol being sold tonight. It's about where it can be sold, next to a church, school, or government building. This, this ordinance tonight nowhere says that we're passing alcohol sales or not passing alcohol sales. So I don't think tonight us talking about how much revenue we're bringing. I think that mostly that the state tax is what is collected from alcohol. It's not, you don't, I don't think we get to keep all the tax that's collected from alcohol sales here in this community anyway. And as far as, we've got a grant writer in our community that does an outstanding job. And if we want to read out and develop some more things for youth, I don't think we have to sell alcohol to do that. I think Make Path County, if I'm thinking correctly, got a grant, built a nice youth complex and for that. But nevertheless, that's not the issue tonight that this is about. This is about it can't be sold next to a church or a school. I appreciate the comments you made tonight. And I see that, that, you know, children, I look around around and see several children tonight that are not school age. Others, maybe they're going to have children on the way. This is what I'm, my concern tonight is, is about when those children are leaving school and alcohol being sold next to that school. Or children are at their church and having a Saturday night picnic with the Sunday school and alcohol being sold right down the street. That's what my concern is. Of course, I'm against alcohol. That's, that's no secret to anybody. But tonight, what I'm asking the city council to do is pass an ordinance saying that if alcohol does get voted on and does pass here, we've got an ordinance in place saying where it can be sold. I'm going to ask you tonight to stamp out the possibility of selling alcohol. I'm saying where it can be sold. That's what I like the cities and city council. That's what I think I'd like to keep our discussion to tonight, if we could, keep our discussion to tonight, if we could, is about the ordinance, about where it can and can't be sold at. There, there's a ton of things, I know there's, uh, different statistics, and I, I know our chief of police, he's been in, uh, police officer in many different towns, and I'm sure that, now, I, I don't really put him directly on the spot, but I'm sure he can tell many, many stories, a lot more than I can or anybody else in this room could tonight, of horror stories about alcohol, domestic abuse, uh, the DUI cases, the alcohol, the wrecks that people have with alcohol. But nevertheless, that's not what I'm here to, to try to ask the council about tonight. I think we can, uh, we can all establish that if that gets to go to a vote, but what I'm asking tonight is, let's pass an ordinance saying it can't be sold next to a church or a school or a government building. That, I think that's what I really want us to focus on tonight, is what this ordinance states, and, and I'm asking the council tonight to, uh, take an issue on it, and, and let's get it passed on second reading. Passed unanimously the first time, and, uh, I'd like to see that, uh, happen tonight again. Anybody else have a question that I left out, if I did, I'm sorry. Yes, sir?
Well, Russell, I'd like to know, I see several young kids in here, and I see several that's fixing to have young kids. If this is brought to our, they keep saying it's in Bongrin, that's in Bongrin, that's fine. What's gonna happen to these kids when a drunk driver hits one of these kids? It's different when it comes knocking on your door.
That's right.
Amen?
I agree.
It's different when it comes knocking at home.
Where's the question?
And the people that's for this, they got children. What if one of their children got killed by a drunk driver, would they still be here one day?
That's right. That is very true. When it touches home, it's so easy to change that gender.
Both of you's done an excellent job, and, um, you've gotten questions, you've covered it pretty well, and you've...
I'd like to say something.
Oh, yeah, there you are.
Please?
Yes, you're right. You just wanna talk off... You always talk everybody's.
I'd just like to say that, you know, I have the utmost respect for all of you in this room. Uh, you're special to me in some way, and I'd like to say that so many things have been addressed about this city and what it would do and what it wouldn't do, but I guess my, we're not close to filing bankruptcy, are we? This town has always been great. Dr. Foster, it puts you and your wife a great career out there that you taught me in class. Dr. Huntsman, you worked on my teeth. I smile at people, I give you credit for it. Mayor, the same goes with you and your wife. But we've done all of this, and we've never had to refer back to the, the sale of alcohol. This little town is pure, this little town is good. We have our faults, we have our flaws, but listen, I love what we are. I liked how I was raised up. Did I, did I fall, Mr. Goford, to the, the, to the mistakes of this life? Yes, I did. Yes, alcohol is here, it, it is, ain't no question about it. Nobody is saying that it ain't, but listen, let's preserve what we have. I wanna offer, I have four children that are coming up in this community, and I wanna offer them the same thing that was offered to me. Yes, we may, may look to other counties like we're fifty or sixty years behind, but I tell you what, there come a day in my life that Scottsville, Kentucky, when I was over in Indiana, I've traveled to Haiti, I've been to Kenya, I've been to England, and I can tell you, Mr. Goford, my favorite sign is in Westmoreland, Tennessee, says nineteen miles to Scottsville, Kentucky. I love this boy.
I told you about him. If anybody wants to know what I've told him, it pays a lot. He's a man of...
I wanted to step down after that, there's nothing else I can say. Well, I wanna say something to the ones that are here tonight on the other side of this, uh, the ordinance. Listen, I love you, I'm, I'm not mad at any of you, we, I agree to disagree. Uh, me and my wife have agreed to disagree on a lot of subjects. Most time I go her way, Mayor, but I just wanna say that tonight.
We all understand that.
No matter what takes place, it's not gonna change my feelings towards any of you tonight. Thank you for the time to speak tonight, I appreciate it.
We'll go on further, and you all done wonderful job both of you tonight, and let's, I call it both sides here, or whatever. Uh, we have three things we need to address. Uh, first of all, to have a second reading and complete the enacting of the ordinance set. You haven't allowed anyone to hear this. I fix them to. I'll ask for it, just... Go for it. I'm not sitting next to it. All right. Or we can rescind or revoke and void the first reading of June eighth. Or we can table further actions on the ordinance at this time, uh, it can be handled for a future date. There's three things that we need to kinda look at tonight. Mr. McGuire, you still with me?
Yes, I am.
All right. Now, um, Dr. Mark, I'm gonna let you go first.
Oh.
I'm gonna let any, anyone of you that wants to speak or whatever.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, first of all, I wanna thank everyone here that's present tonight, and those who are not present tonight, and those that couldn't get in, uh, for your interest on an important issue as, as it relates to, to our city that we all love. Uh, and I'm indeed impressed by your, your passion and involvement in this situation. I would wish there was this kind of involvement in a lot more issues that we face here, and not only here, but in the state and in the national government. And what I'm gonna say tonight, I have, uh, I've spent several hours, uh, over last week putting it together, deleting things, adding things, and, and trying to make, uh, my position clear, but bringing up some points that maybe some other folks may not have, and, and some of them have been touched. And I've written it, so I apologize for reading it, but I've, uh, I've said what I wanna say on paper, so I'm, I'm gonna do it that way. While what I say will not change or weaken my vote on the first reading of this ordinance, but I do wanna make a couple of points. As I said when this first issue, this issue first arose, I still question enacting an ordinance proposing a position against something that may never exist, and that point has been made also tonight and several times previously. And next, I ask you to try to understand that our responsibility as elected officials is to hear from and represent all the residents of Scottsville. If we're not doing that, we're not doing what we were elected to do. And regardless of how I feel personally as a resident, I have the responsibility to hear from both sides of an issue, and the proponents have a constitutional right to be heard. Apparently, to this point, any proponents of alcohol sales have chosen not to contact me for whatever reason, and have apparently chosen to make their wishes known by signing or supporting the available petition to hold an election, and I commend them for that. Now additionally, and Kelly has referred to some, uh, references, uh, court cases, but I've spent the last week, uh, doing some research myself, and so after researching other ordinances and court cases concerning these ordinances, and I'm not an attorney, I have concerns about the content and wording of our ordinance that may need to be amended to be more specific before adopting. For example, there are areas in the city that entrances to residential areas that are bordered on either side by property zone commercial, where alcohol sale might be permitted. Most of us with homes in those areas, and mine's one of them, would be opposed to that. Also, some ordinances measure this specified distance, and in my research, I found distances from three hundred feet to a half a mile, from front door to front door, as the crow flies, and as Kelly has written in our ordinance, measured from the door of one to the door of the other, following the, the closest pedestrian route along the street. I found that one had that kind of measurement, but in the case of a school, or a church, or a playground, the distance was measured to the closest property land, not the front door, of the school or church playground involved. So that could make a big difference. Whether it's a thousand feet or three hundred feet, if you measure from the front door of the liquor establishment to the front door of a church or school, and you measured from the front door of the liquor establishment to the closest property land. I also found, and Kelly, uh, referred to this too in another state, that the state regulating body, like our Alcohol Beverage Commission, ruled against the city's ordinance in regard to the distance requirement. So in conclusion, again, my personal position as a resident of Scottsville is not weakened, not changed, but I feel that adoption should be delayed at this time. Now, to avoid being misquoted or out of context, I've made copies of what I just read, and anyone, I didn't make two hundred. Uh, I would be happy to, uh, anybody that wants a copy of what I just said to mull it over or, uh, question me about it personally, uh, later time, you're welcome to. Thank you, Mayor.
First, I'd like to say that, uh, I wasn't here at the last meeting, at the, uh, ma'am, wasn't aware that this was going to come out, uh, I found out, of course, when I returned. Um, and, um, so again, it's given me a, a month to mull it over, and I will say that I, after being on the, on council now for thirty-three years, it's one of the things I've mulled over more than any other. Uh, I would like to thank everyone that's here for coming, I appreciate it. I'd like to thank you for the cards, uh, and I've received nothing, every card that I've received has been, uh, in favor of the ordinance, uh, every call that I've heard gotten has been in favor of the ordinance. Um, and so, um, and I'm thrilled at this meeting, you can get this many people that are this passionate about an issue and still be agreeable, uh, you know, disagree without being disagreeable, and I appreciate that. And Keith Patrick, I love you too. Uh, as, as you well know. Now, I took also time to write something, and I took time to write it so that sometimes when you just talk off the cuff, you don't cover everything you want to, and sometimes you cover things that you don't mean to, and sometimes you cover one point three times instead of one. And so I wrote everything, and I hope you will be patient with me. Uh, those of you that did have me in class, those that patience, you sometimes have to be patient with me. So I would like to, I've written a position statement, and I as well, again, I didn't write off two hundred, but I ran off forty copies, and anyone that's, that wants one at, at the end can get one. And I did this for my own protection too. I, seriously, you, you, you know how it goes, uh, that if you, you know, if somebody jumps up and does something, and five people have watched them, and those five people go five different places and tell them what happened, you're gonna get five different, all right? This is not going, there's not gonna be any question about where I stand on this, okay? Whether you like it, don't like it, or, or whatever, it's here, it's on paper, and I, I also beg your forgiveness, but I'm gonna have to read it. So, so that I don't get off the subject. It seems to me that the situation with which we are confronted is one that the English refer to as tilting at windmills. This is an idiom for attacking imaginary problems. We do have real problems in Allen County. Methamphetamine abuse is a real problem. With eighteen point six percent of the population living below the national poverty level, we know that poverty is a real problem. Most everyone will agree that a dwindling number, number of healthcare providers is a real problem. Obesity is a real problem, smoking is a real problem, unemployment is a real problem. What is not a real problem, however, is the need to prevent alcohol serving establishments within a thousand feet of churches and government buildings. This is instead an example of simply borrowing trouble by creating an imaginary problem where none actually exists, and I say this for several reasons. First, alcohol sales are not legal in Allen County. After the Eighteenth Amendment, which established prohibition, was repealed by the Twenty-First Amendment in nineteen thirty-three, each state was allowed to establish regulations regarding beverage alcohol within its borders. Unlike many other states which passed statewide laws, Kentucky chose to leave much of the regulation of beverage alcohol to individual localities. Thus, the responsibility for the regulation fell under local option. Since that time, Allen County has consistently chosen to prohibit the sale of alcohol under local option, and thus this ordinance would attempt to regulate something that does not exist, therefore the proposal is moot and has no practical value. Second, at sixty-four, and having lived in Scottsville for all but my college years, I can practically guarantee that not only are alcohol sales not currently legal, they are not going to be in the foreseeable future. Let's take a look at why I say this. Most of us have probably seen the petition that's circulating, trying to get enough signatures to put alcohol sales on the ballot. That petition reads as follows. "We, the undersigned registered voters hereby petition for a countywide election to be held Tuesday, September twenty-ninth, two thousand and fifteen, on the following question. Are you in favor of the sale of alcoholic beverages in Allen County?" Please note, and this is what caught me, please note that this petition does not mention Scottsville in particular, but Allen County in general. If the petition had mentioned only Scottsville, the odds of an alcohol referendum passing would have been remote, but written as it is to include all of Allen County, it has absolutely no chance of passing. Even the counties that border Allen and whose cities have legalized alcohol sales some since nineteen sixty have not legalized the sale in county areas outside the cities. Then consider this. Recently, the local library board tried to gather enough petition signatures to lower, not raise, lower the tax rate. However, this effort fell over a hundred signatures short of the goal. Everyone knows that in general, people hate taxes. So if the library board cannot get enough valid signatures from Allen County citizens to lower their own library tax rate, the odds seem extremely remote that the pro-referendum forces will gather enough valid signatures to force a ballot on alcohol sales. And even if there were a referendum, it has no chance of passing countywide. Third, it has been, it has come to my attention that there has been no proposal, such as the one now before the city council, brought before the fiscal court. Since the aforementioned petition, from what we just talked about, refers to the sale of alcoholic beverages in Allen County, why is the city being asked to pass such an ordinance and not the county? Surely, the forces that have proposed this ordinance for the city would be just as opposed to having beer joints in Holland, or Fleet, or Halfway, or Metter as they are in Scottsville. However, their actions don't make it appear that way, and I can't make any sense of why that's true. Fourth, I have enough Ethel Foster in me that I don't mind letting you know how I stand on an issue. That being said, I will tell everyone here that I've not signed the petition, nor do I plan to. On the extremely remote chance that the petition receives enough signatures to force a referendum, you will find no vote yes signs in my yard. For both cultural and economic reasons, I think that the costs associated with the sale of alcohol in our community far outweigh the benefits, and I oppose it. All of these facts, however, do not mean that I support the current ordinance, and I do not support it because it is patently undemocratic. We are a nation of laws, not of men, and although I feel that the petition has little chance of garnering a sufficient number of valid signatures to force a referendum, I am not blind enough not to see that this ordinance is a poorly veiled attempt to stifle the will of the people, whatever that will might be. And this brings up yet another point that must be addressed. I firmly believe that the pro-alcohol forces actually want the ordinance to pass a second reading. I am no attorney, but I've taken enough government classes, read enough court opinions, to believe that this ordinance is unenforceable. You can't pass ordinances that effectively nullify laws, and since this one would ban sales in almost a hundred percent of those areas that are zone commercial in the city of Scottsville, that's exactly what this one would do. So by passing an ordinance, regulating a situation that doesn't exist, we open ourselves up to a lawsuit that no one wants, that the city can ill afford, and that we would have virtually no chance of winning. Fifth, the law of unintended consequences holds that the actions of people, either acting individually or as groups, often have effects that are unanticipated... acting individually or as groups, often have effects that are unanticipated, and many times run counter to the original intent of the action. History is rife with these. John Wilkes Booth assassinated Abraham Lincoln to avenge the defeat of the South, and this threw Reconstruction into the hands of radical Republicans who chose to punish the South in a way that Lincoln never would have. Woodrow Wilson chose not to appoint any Republicans to the American delegation attending the Versailles Conference at the end of World War I, and the result was a failure of the Senate to ratify the Treaty of Versailles or join the League of Nations. This weakened the League, leading to the rise of fascism in Germany and Italy that eventually led to World War II. I know you don't want a history lesson, but I want to emphasize that the passing of this ordinance would not have a head them off at the past, would not head them off, head the problem off at the past, but would rather create the potential for problems that would have never occurred in the first place. I truly believe that the imaginations of a few individuals fed the flames of fear when the Hardest Scottsville attempted to strengthen the downtown business district by bringing in a modestly upscale restaurant. Rumors, and I can attest to the fact that they were only rumors because I've been a member of the Hardest Scottsville since its inception. Rumors that eighteen eighty-one was going to cause Scottsville to go wet brought about an unfortunate series of events that led to this ill-advised ordinance. And in a strange twist of fatal, the restaurant that catalyzed this ordinance is now closed. I want everyone present to know that I have a tremendous amount of respect for those who felt led to oppose the current ordinance. I've known many of them for a long time, and I've taken into consideration all of their concerns. I've received several letters and telephone calls over the past two weeks, all of which oppose alcohol sales in Scottsville. And as an elected official, I appreciate their input. In addition, I concur, I agree with their belief that alcohol sales in Scottsville would be negative for our community. And as such, I too oppose those sales. However, I disagree that the proposed ordinance, for the reasons I above listed, is the proper avenue for that purpose. I hereby move that we table this ordinance.
I started saying, you want to put that in some motion?
I will move that we table the ordinance till such a time as there is a reason for it.
My final statement was, I feel adoption should be delayed at this time. So I second the motion.
Can I speak? Roger Limpkin's like, uh, no, no, she can go, she can go. Alright, she just wanna say a word.
Well, I, this is a lot of information, and again, I thank everybody for their input, but, um, I just feel like it's, it's too soon to do anything about this. Just learning about governing, I certainly don't want to give our city in a position to have lawsuits and problems that we might not have. And I guess, like Franklin, I've lived here my whole life, I've lived in Lowell for a few years, but I don't ever think it's gonna pass. I just don't, I just don't.
I was a minister when I was appointed to this council and then re-elected each year for the last twenty years or so. I'm still a minister. I will always be opposed to the sale of alcohol. I may not have throttled this ordinance through very much, but here's how I look at it. If I cut my foot, and I go to the doctor, and the doctor says, "You might get an infection, let's amputate," that's not real wise. But if I go to the doctor and he says, "You have an incurable cancer growing in your foot, and the only way to take care of it is to amputate." Then I looked at it, I was, I was a person whose life was torn apart, and I lived in hell because of alcohol in my home. I don't want to ever see that happen to anyone. I know there are people who can drink responsibly, I know they're out there, I know that they can, but I, the availability of alcohol right next door to my house just almost killed us. And I, I, I did this to try to do anything that I could to stop this sale. I understand where Mark is, I understand where Franklin is, I, I can understand their viewpoint, and I can actually under, I can actually understand why they say that. But I can never back up on what I said, and I, I will, I will vote to, uh, to go ahead and have the second reading of the ordinance. I, I, I understand that, and that, but I want you to know, and I want you all to know, this community comes together, we work together, and whatever you decide here tonight, don't go out and have a hissy fit. Love one another, care about one another, unless there's nothing we can. These people are good people, and I feel a privilege of serving with them, and I have for a long time. And I will always respect what they did, because nobody on this council has an agenda. They will do what's best for this community. And thank you.
Yes, I'd like to speak. First, I am so proud to see both pro and con people that are here tonight concerned about Scottsville and Allen County. We, the majority of us, have been citizens here for years. And over those years, I'm sixty-five for me, I am so proud to say that I interact with people in my church, in other churches throughout the city and the county. I interact with all of the people in school systems, I interact with those same people in church activities, school activities, work activities. The biggest thing that I see Scottsville and Allen County having to grow on is the unity of the people here. I see old people, I see young people, I see grandmas, I see mamas and daddies that are here, and we are concerned about what happens to Scottsville and Allen County. We too are concerned about the economic situation for Scottsville and Allen County. Probably Allen County and Scottsville can witness to poverty in more ways than one. And we do have major concerns here about drinking problems. It's not gonna prevent anyone from taking a drink in our city or in our county, or having alcoholic beverages in our city or in our county. But the ordinance that, and I'm new to this, this is my first year, and it's an honor to be here. But the reason that I chose to take a stand on this ordinance was a factor called respect. I think it was something that the city government tried to enact and wants to enact in respect to churches, to government buildings, to school systems. We've got wonderful school systems here. I too will have to stand firm that I believe that what we're hearing about ordinances of the past is like thirty years ago, where cities and counties has tried to enact an ordinance and it couldn't be passed. We're talking about what we can do today to maybe prevent heartaches in the future. My stand is, and it won't change, that I'm against the sale of alcoholic beverages here. Because if we've got one thing we can promote our city and our town on, and if you look around, the neighbors that are coming in here, a lot of them are retired people. They're coming here because they see something that we've got that they want. And I'm proud to be a citizen of Scottsville, I'm proud to be a citizen of Allen County, and I'm especially proud to be an American, because we can table and talk about a decision that needs to be made in our environment. And I'm so appreciative of people that has voiced concerns to me about keeping it dry. I am appreciative of those people who have voiced concerns to me about liking to see the sale of alcohol. But you know what? If you want it, you can get it. Why have it easily accessed here? And I've used this in comparison to many of you that I've already spoken to, that the fact of convenience changes a lot of people's minds with purchasing alcohol. I grew up about eleven miles out in the country, and it was seldom if ever that I had the opportunity to come to town to eat, because we had to drive eleven miles in and then go eleven miles back out to go back home. So therefore, most of all of our meals was put on the table from our farm. Now that I'm a citizen right here in Scottsville, and I'm in spitting distance of Dumplings, Dairy Queen, uh, Griddles, uh, I can go on and on with all the establishments. I think every night, where am I gonna eat tonight? Because it's convenient, it's here, it's accessible to me. If I had to go, if I still lived in the county, I'd put a lot more, a lot more effort into the purchase of it. So therefore, I'll have to take the stand and still feel, stand firm that I support our ordinance. Maybe our wording isn't right, Dr. Mark, maybe we need to revisit it and make it clear. I think a property line versus a front door could be a major difference. I think too that, Mr. Powell, that the fact that we have, uh, used some comparisons of maybe thirty years ago, that what was in effect at that time, I know why the ABC Board probably supports the sale of alcohol. Kentucky overall is known for its bourbon, and the sale of bourbon. So why shouldn't it be a supporting factor as far as alcohol sales is concerned? But we don't have a distiller here. So, uh, that's my stand. Thank you.
Mr. Maguire, you still with me?
Yes, I'm still with you. Uh, I'd like to say a few things if everybody can hear me.
We can hear you. Go.
Alright, alright. First of all, it's really tough to call all five of you guys, so I'm gonna do what, do the best I possibly can. Like everyone else, I've grown up in Allen County all my life. And, uh, I've gotten calls and letters and cards, and I am very appreciative of that. I, it's touched my wife's heart that I've received all that stuff, and I'd like to thank everybody for being there at the city council meeting tonight. I, I hope that you guys will continue to come back on everything that we have on other Mondays. But, uh, I'm in agreeance with Dr. Mark and Dr. Foster, after listening to them, and I've done some homework when I've had some downtime and stuff, obviously, I'm in Indiana right now. But, uh, seeing what other cities have their ordinances, uh, the states and everything else, I feel, even after talking to other people and saying that I am, I am supportive of an ordinance, but I feel that we need to reword the ordinance that we have to better fit the needs of the city and every citizen, which is not a two-select on either side, but every citizen of Scottsville. Again, we were elected to be the voices of the citizens, and we owe it to every citizen of Scottsville to be able to give them the best ordinance that we possibly can, follow us doing the homework that we can, and give them the best that we can. So I am in agreeance with tailoring this ordinance until we can come up with something better when it needs to be.
Thank you, sir. You take your side. Okay. Last motion, and I have a second. And we can speak there, but I've got a question, Roger.
Yes, sir.
Why haven't you gone to the fiscal court to judge how? What, we've called it off, why? Why have you not?
We are by stand-up, addressing.
Yes, I want you to stand up.
We, we have never ruled out going.
Keep coming, get around a little bit, but I'm asking, go ahead.
Yes, sir. We, we've never ruled out going, but our plan is eventually to go to the fiscal court with this same ordinance. However, there is a more concentrated area of churches and government buildings in the city than there is the county. Matter of fact, so we, we felt like we needed to get it in place here, and then we're going to the county next. Uh, it's not that the county fiscal court's not on our radar, matter of fact, we have, uh, I don't know if I have them with me tonight, but we have collected signatures of people that are ordinance, or a petition basically that says that we would like to see this ordinance, basically the same one we have, you've presented, passed in the city and the county. And it has signatures of both county and city, I think we have those that we are to, to present those as well. Our, our intention is going to the county. However, we felt like the city was where we needed to go first. I think that if alcohol was passed, and I appreciate your passion in saying that you don't feel like that, uh, a very bold statement that it can't pass, I hope you're correct. I hope you're correct. However, I, I can't predict the future quite that way, oh, what can and can't happen, I, 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 I really, but I do appreciate the passion of that. But I felt like that if someone was gonna build some, that type of establishment, they would probably look at doing it in the city before they went to the county. But the county was on our radar, we were headed that direction, we just wanted to get it in place in the city before we went to the county. It wasn't that we were avoiding the county, we was going for the judge also, so I wouldn't just pick it on you, Mayor.
Yeah, you are. You and Danny. Therefore, it's about ten or twelve, they would come up here one night, and it was all laid out about the city, and that's where we looked at.
Can I speak about that again when you're finished?
Yes, but then Andrew comes out and puts a wet and dry county, and that's completely different of this moisture vote that we was, Kelly is trying to, you see what I'm talking about?
Sure.
So that's why I'm saying, so you're gonna tell me that you are going after the fiscal court and Johnny Hocken?
I'm, I'm going after the judge, but, but, let me say this, when we came here the first time, the reason we came to the city council first, instead of going to the county first, is at that time, I think it was leaning more towards a city-only vote is what people we were hearing it was going more towards. And, and I do appreciate you, you know, I, maybe been some rumors to it, I don't know, however, uh, we got our information directly from, uh, not, not that the Hardest Scottsville did this, we got it directly from the restaurant's webpage at that time, or their, their Facebook page at that time, is where we got our information from. I, I think we presented to council, at that time, there's a couple of new council members with a photo of their, of their post, that's, but that is where that, that, that was started from. However, I don't really feel like that was rumor, I think when you see things on my company's page, it's pretty much what I intend to do when it's on my page. But that's why we came to city first, because at that time it was a, a, a city thing. This time, I know that the petition does state a county-wise, so the county was, uh, is on there, can't tell you exactly when we were gonna go, didn't have a, a date set, we wanted to, uh, to come back to the council first, because I think we had some conversations after our last council meeting, and when we came back some year and a half ago, so.
It's the third time, I think we've progressed.
Yes, I believe so. Thank you, again, appreciate all your comments, and, uh, I appreciate all of them, thank you.
Okay, I'll let each one of you express you. Now, Dr. Foster made the motion, and he's seconded to table.
Let me ask one other question.
Certainly.
Kelly, if, if the ordinance, and again, I'm, my position is still against, I thought sales, if we amend the ordinance, make it more detailed, does that require another first reading?
Yes.
So there would be two readings?
Yes, if you amended, you amend this ordinance, it could require starting over for a first.
May I ask a question? You don't mind? I'm sorry. Uh, I wanna ask this question to, to Mr. Powell, if you don't mind. If, is there an ordinance, if this ordinance was voted on and passed, eh, on the second reading, is it ever a possibility to go back and, not necessarily, not necessarily, I guess make those amendments or adjustments to it, or once an ordinance, that way, is it gotta be that way forever?
No.
And have to go back to a first, second reading process again, and I'm just probably dumb on that, so.
It could be amended, but it would require a second ordinance with a first reading and second reading again, but it would be amended. Do we miss table? Do we miss table?
That was just my question, I didn't know. Apologize for not knowing that answer.
I don't know, same, thank you.
The ordinance to make it different than what it says now.
I think a very unlikely situation that it would have, because I, as I said, I don't ever believe it passed in Allen County. I hope it doesn't, I don't even believe it. But if it did, how long would we have as a city to come back and, and try to, you know, deal with it anyway? Is there a certain amount of time? Do you know, Kelly, is that a thing? Can you just... Is there a certain amount of time? Do you know, Kelly, is that a thing? Can you just, maybe it would? I didn't know.
I don't think there's any statues.
No statue, no.
You can wait through the second reading.
Once it gets, well, in the unlikely event that Scottville is voted with, the ABC people would be down here to handle the details of setting up the licensing of alcoholic beverages sales at places in Scottsville or Allen County, as the case might be, and, uh, I have had no experience with them, obviously, I've lived here in the dry county all my life so far, and I don't, I don't read the liquor cases when they come out, but you'll never have it here, but, but I don't think.
I'm sorry, I just found a.
There's no, there's no set time, my, my guess would be, and I must say, I have no experience dealing with ABC, my guess would be, they're not gonna be down here the next day or the day after that, we would have plenty of time to have meetings, even special call meetings if necessary, to do any ordinance enacting that would, uh, that would be, that the council might be necessary or appropriate. Alright, I'm going back. How many of you are going to be for tabling this tonight? Raise your hand, please. Four. How many is against it? It passes, we will be tabling this for a.
Indefinitely.
Indefinitely till it brings back. Now, I got another question. I'm not too sure.
I have one.
Okay, go ahead, Mayor. I, I think I can ask this, and Andrew, you can challenge me. Where are you on this petition? I've never seen one.
This, we have until July twenty-ninth, the way the petition is written. We have until July twenty-ninth to collect sixteen hundred and ninety-one signatures validated. We do not at this time have sixteen hundred and ninety-one validated.
Thank you, appreciate that. You hear different things about all this, but I thought that needed to be brought out here in front of everyone.
Now, Mr. Mayor, we have over two thousand signatures, but as you understand, some of those did not validate.
Yes, I understand that. That's it, right? For it? Okay, here's what I want, thank you all again, we'll be addressing it, I'm sure. Thank you all, and thank you again for coming tonight. I hope you see that, and people, I want you to understand, these people have not changed their thing about alcohol in the city of Scottville, okay? I wanna make that point. And you all may stay if you want to, uh, you see this agenda I've still gotta go through tonight, and, uh, you may leave at any time, and I'm sure some of you out there, Tommy, you all are getting tired of standing up. Thank you all for coming.